Welcome to the meeting of the Wakefield School Committee on September 27, 2016. I hereby call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We have a lot of guests and a full agenda tonight, so we want to move right through the meeting and right through the agenda. We start by reading the mission statement of the Wakefield Public Schools. The mission of the Wakefield Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students to be lifelong learners who are meaningful contributors to society and meet their academic, social, civic, and physical potential. As we do every meeting, we have a public comment period, so I want to welcome anyone from the public who wishes to comment on either items that are on the agenda tonight or items of concern to them. Is there anyone who wants to speak or public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along. I don't think we have Bridget, our student advisory council member, tonight, so we can move past that. I think we'll try, we'll come out of order with the committee's permission and go to the consent agenda, starting with the approval of our minutes from September 13.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the September 13, 2016 meeting as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the September 17, 2016 school committee retreat as presented.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, we'll go to the chairman's comments. I sent around this, earlier this afternoon, a subcommittee reorganization. Did everybody get that? Everybody receive that? Any questions about that? Thoughts? The guiding principle around that was less is more, and so the idea was that each committee would have a chair and two members. The chairs then would not be assigned to a second subcommittee. That was the principle I used. But if you have any thoughts or questions about the document I sent today, just follow it with me. And of course, remembering that we can always create ad hoc subcommittees and, you know, special subcommittees focused on particular issues if they come up during the course of the year. We had a great school committee retreat two Saturdays ago. I hope that everybody got the summary documents that Dorothy Presser from the Mass Association of School Committees shared with us, and so we'll take those and integrate those into the committee's work going forward. And I just want to remind all of the members that we are encouraged to attend the Mass Association of School Committee, Mass Association of School Superintendent's Joint Conference on the Cape on November 2. I know Tom has encouraged us to attend. There's lots of good information there, and Kim has a related piece of information that she wanted to share on that.
So, the new superintendent's induction program leaders contacted me last week to ask me if I would be willing, along with a school committee member, if I had someone that might be attending the conference, to speak on a panel in regard to the program. They didn't give me any details yet about what we will be presenting, but just wanted me to reach out to my own school committee to, for those of you who might be attending, if someone might be willing to partner with me for that presentation. So, I'll know more later, but I just wanted to let you know that that's on the table, and I'd love to present with somebody, so.
All right. Any questions about the chairman's comments, thoughts? Okay.
So, I want to thank Mr. Liakos for going out of order. He's actually covering time for me right now, because I have wonderful prizes for the kids, and they were supposed to be delivered to this office, and they're not here, so they've obviously been delivered to the wrong place. So, we're just kind of stalling for a few minutes, hoping, we've got a message out, hoping to get them here.
A bunch of Melrose kids are really enjoying their prizes.
So, I really wanted to send you home tonight with prizes, but we'll see. Well, I'll do a couple of my other remarks and comments, and then I'll bring the students up, and hopefully they will have arrived by them. If they haven't, we'll go to a Plan B. We'll think on the fly here. But a couple of, just on my other category, last night, or late yesterday afternoon, the MCAS and Park results came out publicly, and we will, at our next meeting, Mr. Lyons will be here, Assistant Superintendent, after we've analyzed the data, and we'll do a presentation for you at our next meeting. So, we're looking forward to that. I included in your packet an updated later start time community conversation plan. Ann Danekin and I had a conversation about how we might approach the work based on our committee's last discussion, and we were able to register for a workshop on December 9 to participate in, to learn about some of the research and some of the data and experiences of other communities, get some questions in. So, we really kind of adjusted the whole timeline based on that workshop. So, I included that for you in your packet. And then the last thing that I included in the packet was my September monthly update, just because I thought it was an important one to memorialize in our public documents in regard to the development of the district core values, vision, and strategy. And I am hosting an open PTO meeting tomorrow morning from 9 to 10:30 a.m. at the Savings Bank Theater, and welcoming any parents and all parents to join us for a presentation, a second presentation for parents. So, that is what's happening tomorrow. So, with a with prizes, we must go on. So, why don't we say that Plan B was, will be that I will communicate out to you if I'm not able to get the prizes in your hands tonight, but I will tell you what they are, so you can get excited about them, okay? But I do want to recognize our wonderful participants and winners, so I'm going to take the cordless mic and come to the front and maybe ask Mr. Liakos if he will join me. Okay, well, thank you to all the parents and families that joined us tonight, too, because we certainly know that doing work over the summer, math and reading, definitely comes with a lot of support by parents. So, thank you so much for supporting your children and doing this. But I'd like to start with our math raffle prize winners. So, all of the students that will be coming up participated by doing math work over the summer. They could have been at the beach, they could have been at the playground, but they spent some time working on their math skills to keep their skills sharp coming into the new year. So, we have a winner from each elementary school, two winners from the Galvin, and two winners from the high school. One student, I believe, could not attend tonight. So, let's bring all the students up here. Let's start with, from the Greenwood School, Bailey Quimby, grade 2. Bailey, come on up. Yes, Bailey, come join us. And Jacob Williams from the Woodville School, also grade 2. And Nicholas Laris from the Walton, grade 3. Nicholas. And Henry Brown from the Dahl Bear, grade 4. Come on up, Henry. Was that the one, maybe that's not, is Henry Brown here?
No.
Okay, he's not here. So, why don't we start with these three? And I just want to say, congratulations, good job on doing your math all summer long. And can you guys tell us, so, did you enjoy doing math over the summer? Was it fun to do?
I like doing the math because I know a lot of math, and it's fun to, and we talked with all the students.
Very well said, and here come the prizes. All right. So, I might need a little help sorting them out. So, for these guys, they got a really cool terrarium, and they got a history coloring book to go with it. So, if you could, might be able to help me with the math prizes. Bailey Quimby from Greenwood, Jacob Williams from Woodville, and Nicholas Laris from Walton. Here they come. Oh, and they were all color-coded. And we'll take a picture, so, okay. Okay, where's Nicholas?
Two different guys.
Yeah? Each prize.
That's awesome.
We do this every meeting.
Always having fun.
The prize in the picture.
Congratulations. And then let's, we'll bring our winners. One of our Galvin students was not able to attend, Ananya Hernandez in grade 6. I'd like to invite up Samantha Sheedy, grade 7, Cameron Shudry, grade 9, and Nicholas Major, grade 10. Congratulations. And they're looking for their prizes. Congratulations to you, and congratulations to you. So, I read some of your, what you wrote about the work you did this summer. Would anyone care to comment on the work you did over the summer in math, or why it was important to you?
Okay, so, I think it was important because, like, I know at first it was kind of difficult to bring myself to do it, but after some time of my mom nagging me, it's clearly worth it, because I'm getting something.
The math work, it was important because it sharpened my skill even more for the, a year ahead, so it helped me throughout the time I did the math work.
Excellent, very good. The math work is important because over the summer, sometimes you forget, like, the things you learned. So, when we did the math over the summer, we, like, remember, and when we get back to school, we, like, know everything.
You don't have to redo everything again, right? Yeah.
Outstanding. So, these guys are getting Amazon gift cards and some pretty cool Wakefield Warrior hats. All right, let's take our photo before we leave. Thank you guys very much. Congratulations. All right, and now on to summer reading. So, I'd like to bring our elementary students up here first. From the Woodville School, we have Kate Penaccia, and she's a kindergarten student. Come on up, Kate. Hi, Kate. And we have William Herzog from the Dahl Bear School in grade 1. Hi, William. And we have Macy Hill from the Walton School, grade 1. And we have Weston McNeely from the Greenwood School, grade 2. Come on up. Is he here today? All right, we're missing one. So, congratulations, you guys. You did a lot of reading over the summer. Would anyone like to tell about what you did for reading? Anybody? Or that you'd like?
I am Herzog, and I fight reading and never gonna give up.
I love that. He's gonna read and never give it up. Very well said. Well, you guys are also getting your very own terrarium and also a history coloring book for working so hard this summer. Thank you guys so much. Good job. All right, let's take our picture for the newspaper, okay? You guys are famous. Great job, you guys. Okay. All right, and from the middle school and high school, we have Emma Callahan, grade 6. She was not able to come, but I wanted to make sure I said her name. We have Jade Roycroft from the Galvin, grade 7. We have Rohan Singvi from the high school, grade 10. And we have Julia Purcell from the high school, grade 11. Come on up. Are the other students not here? All right. Okay, very good. Well, now you're really on the spot. So, did you, did you like reading this summer?
Yeah.
And any thoughts about maybe what it helped, how it helped you coming into the school year?
Well, I think it's just fun to read, so I enjoy reading a lot over the summer.
Great. And you know what? She wrote a beautiful book review. I read it, and it was really great. So, good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So, you have, also have a very cool Wakefield Warrior hat and an iTunes gift card, which every kid loves, so. All right, now, anyone watching on TV, there was one winner of four Red Sox tickets for the spring 2017 season, and the winner was Julia Purcell, Wakefield High School student. So, maybe if you're watching at home, give Julia a call and tell her to drop by Dr. Smith's office for her Red Sox tickets. But congratulations to all the students that joined us tonight. Great job, everybody, and keep up the great work. I think Henry Brown will tell him to come. Henry Brown's not here, right? Yeah, I think he was.
And on behalf of the school committee, I just want to thank all the parents who joined us here tonight for this recognition for the students. It's wonderful to have you all here, and you're welcome to stay.
The superintendent says it's time to go home and do your homework and go to sleep, okay?
So, thank you again. So, we'll move next to our discussion with our state legislative delegation. So, I want to thank you all for joining us here tonight.
That really clears the room, doesn't it?
Yeah. So, Senator Lewis, Representative Broder, Representative Wong, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for taking the time to talk to us tonight.
Good to be with you.
Appreciate it.
Will we be receiving gifts?
Yes.
They have to be under $50.
Did you do your summer reading?
Can I put in a request for the coloring book?
All right, so we'll start with a presentation on the progress we've made with Wakefield Memorial High School, led by Rich Metropolis. Who I'm looking now and seeing is not in the room. He's here, though. There he is.
He was caught out by the tapes. Okay.
Hi, Rich. So, we, just to frame this up, so we thought we'd start by getting everybody back on the same page in terms of where we are in the process with the MSBA, and then have a conversation with you guys about how we can work together to keep moving this forward.
Sure.
And you guys all have, you know, different levels of experience working with the MSBA process. We can share information about next steps on this end, and then, and then we can open it up for other issues we want to, we want to talk.
So, Ms. Rayo and I are here to present just an overview of our facilities, based on some of the work that we've already done previous to this year in creating a statement of interest to go into partnership with the MSBA. So, our presentation is a two-part presentation. Maria will handle the first part, talking about mechanical and structural issues in the existing building, and I'll handle the second part, talking about our teaching and learning needs and our realities with regard to accreditation. Maria?
Good evening. As a result of the initial feasibility process, we learned a great many things. We now have a comprehensive assessment and a thorough understanding of the state of existing facility conditions and their impact on how we deliver and support educational programming. The building and site deficiencies have been identified, clear understanding of the required improvements, the scope, the cost, and the timeline. It's a balance when you go through a feasibility, initial feasibility study, because it's easy to focus on all of the negatives, when in fact, we need to sustain the excellent type teaching and learning that currently occurs, and sustain that until we are able to deliver a new high school. Thank you. The building exterior deficiencies are easy to see, just in driving up. The exterior envelope has significant issues. There are rusted windows and doors. The fieldhouse metal panels have failed. The caulk joints are in poor condition. The exterior and the railings are rusted and cracking. Louvers and vents are in poor condition. The entire roof needs to be replaced, in fact. It's called Swiss cheese because of all of the holes that are existing currently. And as in all things, water will always find its way, and it does in the school. So, no sooner do we fix and repair one leak than another one occurs. So, that rubber membrane is failing. The gutters were destroyed this past win, not the past winter, two winters ago, and the paint on the wood items have failed as well. So, the exterior condition of the school is less than desirable. We've done some cosmetic work and to make it appear a bit better, including the painting of the fieldhouse recently, but really what we were doing is just covering up the existing deficiencies. The interior architectural deficiencies are many, and they're significantly and directly impacting our NIASC accreditation, which Rich, which Principal Metropolis will discuss as we get further into the presentation. The science labs, in fact, need major renovations and updating. They've not been able to keep up with the teaching that is occurring in those spaces, and so, great kudos go to the teachers, the faculty, for being able to work in these conditions and still deliver the quality education that they do on a regular basis. Handicap access issues are prevalent, especially in the restrooms, and so that continues to be problematic. The egress stair, there are some code issues. The interior finishes are indeed in poor condition. The mobile partitions are not sound effective, and so there's no sound attenuation between many of the walls, and so that can be a major distraction, not just for teaching and learning, but for meetings and significant parent conversations as well, and we've done a great job of mitigating those as well. The furniture, in fact, is not suited to modern educational needs. The one theme that you'll hear both in my portion of the presentation and Principal Metropolis's is the lack of flexibility, and that's really what it comes down to. The school has not and cannot continue to be flexible. Certainly, the people that occupy the building have learned to be flexible, and so we appreciate that.
Twice as flexible.
Twice as flexible, exactly. And there's a great need to abate the VAT, which is the vinyl asbestos tile. I should take a step back as well and say, this building is really two buildings, actually three, if we count the fieldhouse. The first building was built in the 1960s, and the second component was finished in the 1970s. So, both those building styles are very different. Both the construction methods have been very different, and so as a result of that, what was state-of-the-art then included some fairly significant asbestos and other building materials. That is not harmful, unless it's, unless it's cracking, and we do repair any, any significant surface like that, that we have any, and we do it very carefully and with all the necessary precautions. But those surfaces do exist in the school. Mechanical and plumbing deficiencies, I grouped these two together. Most systems are well past their life expectancy and should be replaced. The HVAC, there isn't a day goes by that I'm not, I'm cold, I'm hot, sometimes it's the same person, but there's always something going on in a building of this size in terms of the delivery of equipment efficiency and the delivery of those services in terms of temperate learning facilities. There's inadequate fresh air ventilation, for example. The temperature control is lacking. The thermostats, really, you're just spinning them about and not having really any significant impact. The exhaust ventilation is inadequate. There are no digital control systems, as we have, and certainly, you can't necessarily compare what we have today to the Galvin School, but light years ahead of that, and even with all of our other existing schools, certainly, we're able to control the temperature. There have been a few recent equipment replacements, but again, it's spotty, and everything works independent of one another, and so there's not one cohesive HVAC system for the school supporting it. Plumbing, again, the fixtures are not generally handicap accessible, and so that's problematic. There's no water efficient features. In fact, if, on the heating side as well as the plumbing side, efficiency is borne out as well, or the lack of efficiency is borne out in our current utility costs, and so that's something, too, that we'd like to be able to manage and plan for. The faucets, the flush valves, the fountains, the kitchen, all of those areas are impacted. We have leaking pipes, and the supply piping into the school likely has lead solder. All of our pipes internal to the, to the school are all copper, and those have all been changed out. Thank you. Life safety and electrical deficiencies, again, and the common theme is, most systems are well past their life expectancy and should be replaced, and that was borne out as a result of that, that initial feasibility study. The emergency standby systems are not code compliant. The generators are in poor condition. There have been some electrical panel upgrades, but still, the original wiring was reused. And so, when we go to, in fact, to install anything new or try and upgrade something, I like to say that we have spaghetti running through the walls, because there's so much wiring that it's hard to discern what is actually working and what isn't. So, we're always kind of chasing our tail that way. ADA code issues with devices are present on the electrical side. There is currently no voice evacuation system. We were able to, with the town's capital investment over the summer, be able to enhance our existing speaker system, and so that is a huge improvement in terms of delivering and supporting life safety issues here. There's new egress lighting, but exit signs are still required, and there's very old communication equipment. And again, we just reused what we had, but we added to that, so we supplemented our existing systems to add that speaker component over the summer. The power and lighting, many of the systems, they, the parts are just simply not made anymore because of the age of the systems. The main gear parts are no longer made, so it's impossible, truly, and so you're really just starting all over again. The panels and the breakers have all exceeded their lifespans. The panels in the public areas are fully loaded. T8 lamps and ballasts have upgraded, and we've done a significant amount of replacement in terms of LED fixtures, but that is only, again, a drop in the bucket of what truly is in existence here in this building. The lighting is inefficient, there's no automatic control, and we need more occupancy sensors, and there's truly an inadequate number of power outlets, and I think any teacher in this school would, would be, any student in terms of trying to plug in their device or charging it would also echo that.
And we've got some camera, camera students who are echoing that right now, actually.
Exactly.
In terms of the classroom instruction piece and just the overall teaching and learning that goes on, and that's obviously the focus of our building, but there's a lot of other things that occur, meetings and counseling with students. We're really challenged to meet the demands of a 21st century, standards-based and career and college-ready education, where the focus is collaboration and tech integration, and having a student-centered experience, where teachers really facilitate the learning process instead of completely direct it. So, our building, I think, was originally designed for that teacher-led, teacher-driven, teacher-directed instructional focus, and things have changed quite significantly. So, we do have some traditional and progressive programming mixed, I guess you could say, with traditional subject areas that have now worked to transform into an innovative, standard-based curriculum. Students are really challenged with attaining proficiency beyond, proficiency and beyond in 21st century academic competencies outlined in our core values and mission. We challenge our educators to designing lessons that are collaborative with intentional and flexible groupings, but the building itself doesn't always allow for that flexibility. So, we have some classrooms that are really large, and so you might have a class of, say, 20 to 22, and there's plenty of open extra space within that room. And then you could have a classroom of that size that's been halved, so that we can run multiple classes within the same block or period to ensure that we have a reasonable and competitive class size, but that, of course, changes the spacing of the building. And those rooms weren't built to be halved, so all of the electricity, all of the heating, all of the lighting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is designed for one larger space, not two smaller spaces. So, it definitely creates a challenge with the mechanics of the classroom, and the delivery of the instruction is going to be, is going to be affected by that. Moving on to the next slide. In terms of our office space, oops, I'm sorry. I skipped our science labs. So, science labs is probably one of the biggest focus areas. As you can see, one of the major points at the bottom of the slide is our accreditation stash, which, which continues to be on warning as a result of our science labs and other classrooms and their inability to allow for the delivery of instruction and to meet the curriculum needs of 21st century education. With regard to our STEAM initiative, we are developing curricula K to 12 with, with the intention of ensuring that our students are not only in a of ensuring that our students are not only in a position to be career and college-ready, but also to design, I guess you could say, their own career experience beyond college. We want to make sure that these students have a complete experience, so a lot of that comes with a capstone project potentially at the end of their high school career where they're really designing their own learning, and we don't really have maker spaces or design spaces for that experience. We want to ensure that all students, girls and boys, are focused and continuing on in the sciences and technology fields when they get into the high school, and we want to make those experiences attractive as possible for all students, and the spacing that we have and the design of the building right now does not really allow for that. We want to feature kind of small group spaces, workspaces, labs that are flexible and allow for multiple types of sciences to be taught in the same room. So that allows us to be more flexible with our scheduling. You could have a biology lab meeting one block and then a follow-up chemistry lab meeting another block in the same space. It all adds to, as Maria said earlier, flexibility and that need. We want students to be able to do some small group learning, large group learning, research, use of technology, all at the same time, and right now, that's just not possible. In terms of our accreditation status, I will say we were evaluated in 2011, and that visiting committee created a list of like 70 recommendations from their visit, and over the past five years, we've written three, four reports to address those concerns, and I believe we're down to maybe like two recommendations out of the 70. But unfortunately, we're still on warning status for accreditation, and that has to do with the realities of the facility. So there are two standards that are focal points for that warning status. The first is curriculum, and the second is community resources for learning. So in just, the statement is, "Consistent with its policies, the committee determined that the school should remain on warning for the standards of curriculum and community resources for learning until all concerns have been satisfactorily resolved." Just to continue on beyond the accreditation piece, our office spaces and meeting spaces, there are privacy concerns, as Maria had said. The front portion of our building, we're currently housed in the back where this studio is, but in the front portion of the building is the older portion or the older building, and it's been retrofitted from a junior high school that had classrooms into a high school where we house some classrooms and then also all of our office suites. And those office suites have been halved and halved again to the point where the mechanical systems are completely retrofitted and are all essentially inappropriate for each space. The walls themselves are very thin. You can overhear conversations, and most of the conversations that occur in these areas are of particular privacy. So it's problematic. In terms of the mechanical issues that are associated, I know Maria mentioned that, the building logistics itself, the safety systems, there are definitely capital investments to upgrade those systems, but we're still, we're only able to do so much because of the actual status of the building. There is decay around. We do try our best to clean and paint and keep a nice clean sheen on the building, but decay is decay, and it just exists. We've definitely invested some upgrades, and the town has as well, with the speaker system, as Maria put it. We're trying to work on phone systems, emergency radios, walkie-talkies that we use around the building for administration. They actually only work in certain areas because of the way the building is designed, certain layers of concrete makes it difficult to hear from one area of the school to the other. And then the flow and experience of students walking around the building, if you've ever been in our area, what we call Crash Corner, it's where the two older buildings meet, and it, you know, six times a day, it's a very problematic space as classes change. I just would like to conclude with, you know, the challenge that we always put ourselves through at the high school to continually provide this 21st century experience for our students, but it is a challenge in the building that we have. So I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you all.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Maria. So in sum, you know, we have an incredible staff, incredible students, doing amazing work to try to move our, you know, our education further into 21st century model, but we're hamstrung by a 20th century building, a 20th century facility that makes that that much harder. So I'll ask Dr. Smith now to kind of give us a summary of where we are with the MSBA process. We've done a lot of work to get to this point, and then we can open it up for your questions and thoughts and comments.
I'll just share at this stage with Maria Sareo, the Director of Facilities. So we submitted our SOI in the spring. We put a lot of work into it. I would say this is our, by far, the best product that we've submitted, and we just received notice that the MSBA will come out and do a senior site visit on October 27th, I believe it is. And so we'll take that as a bit of good news. It's just like the next step. It means we made the first cut, if you will, and it is the first time such a visit has happened for this particular facility. Anything else to add on that, Maria, in regard to the SOI?
This is really the, so we're very encouraged, we are definitely looking at it as an encouraging development. We're looking forward to that visit. And so there are eight modules as you go into the MSB process, and so this is, we've not reached Module One yet, but so this is the pre-Module One visit, so we are looking forward to it, and we'll continue to do the yeoman's work in trying to deliver a new high school for the town of Wakefield.
And we've also done, just to be clear, we've also done our own, some of our own feasibility work. Can you summarize that, Chris?
On behalf of the Permanent Building Committee, what we did to prepare the Statement of Interest was pretty significant.
Well, we received some funding from the town, a town meeting, and we hired a firm, Doran Whittier, who spent a lot of time in the building reviewing all the mechanicals and the floor plans and found, you know, our total square footage isn't the problem. We actually probably have a little extra as our total square footage, but we cannot utilize it in the way we need to utilize it. And then we add on the mechanicals that, you know, when you have a building that was pieced together in a rush because the school burned down and we were, we had to do something fast, the mechanical systems were never meshed well in the first place, and I believe we've looked at more than one occasionally rather than just this latest study, that the HVAC systems, to bring them up to any sort of balancing was in excess of $15 million. Am I correcting that number? And when you, the science, there are so many options out there, you know, we could just add a science building and then kind of try to renovate the rest or not or whatever, and that might satisfy the accreditation issue. But we're, no matter how we look at it, we're still, we need either a total renovation or a total new building. Interestingly enough, when the, with the three rough proposals that were put forward, I mean, they're certainly not in-depth feasibility, seat feasibility studies, as you, I'm sure, are well aware, it was almost less expensive to build a new building than it was to try to put this one back together because Humpty Dumpty is broke. And it's just, you know, no matter how we look at it, you still trying to fit that square peg into a round hole. And, you know, it's a fight we've been battling for quite some time. Our focus was on the Galvin because it was worse, but we can't, we cannot continue to provide the education we need to provide in the environment that we have. We keep trying different things and trying to patch our way through, and it feels like we're really spending good money after bad, that no matter, you know, we need to kind of bite the bullet and get this done. I did meet at one point with the Director of the MSBA. He came out, went through the building. Clearly, I agreed to our needs. He was upfront, and he said, "This is certainly not the worst building he's ever seen," and I'm sure he's correct. However, you know, we're just trying to make sure that, you know, we have a strong basis of support within the community, and, you know, I think as, from the MSBA's standpoint, we've proven that we can deliver a building on time and on budget and make it work, and we've proven ourselves to be a very good partner with the MSBA already.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Yeah, just for the record, so Chris represents the School Committee and the Permanent Building Committee, which oversees the cap, all the capital programs, public capital programs in town.
So now we have the additionally complex issue of, we have this beautiful state-of-the-art Galvin Middle School. The students are graduating from that, from that school and moving on to Wakefield Memorial High School, and I think we really owe it to our students in a school district that is really coming alive and on a trajectory to becoming a really, really top-shelf school district here in Wakefield, that we really owe it to our kids to have a really high-functioning, high-quality space. And so we really wanted to reach out to you to see what role you might be able to play to support us.
Yeah, and remembering that the support of the Legislative Delegation for the Galvin Project was really key to its success, so.
Well, Tony, you're certainly not the first community to have that experience where you're trying to decide your capital need, and you do something other than the high school, and you raise expectations. And I, I mean, I think, I've seen it in my hometown, it's a good thing because it spurs the community to recognize, A, most importantly, you can do it on time and on budget, which is critically important to your credibility for the next project down the road, and you've proven that that building makes a difference. It's a community center, it's a center of educational excellence, and it wants people wanting more. And when you go, you know, when you go up the road and you get to, when you get to the high school, I'm sure parents are a little bit disappointed that, just, you know, it's striking. It's just striking, and the instruction is terrific, but there's a sense that you can do more when you see a building like that.
Wakefield has the same problem as what SARGUS has right now. I'm going to be having a meeting with the MSBA tomorrow morning, because we're looking to build a new high school also. With them, they always look to see if you have to rehab or make a new building, and they're going to give you the judgment of. So we have to prepare ourselves to show them why we need a new building. The heating system, you know, it wasn't built for today's classes, and especially some of the windows and hallways, you know, you can hear the wind blowing through. It's like having screen, screen windows instead of windows themselves. And in SARGUS, and like Wakefield, the buildings were spread out at that time. So for the heating costs and everything in the future, it's going to be crazy, you know, you're just throwing money out the window. So if we can build a great plan, like I think you have, especially after hearing what you had to say, I think by working together, we can convince them that it's better to have a new high school than a rehab. And that's what we're doing at SARGUS. They already came to inspect and everything else, and it's, right now, we still have to show what we would do with a rehab and how we would do a new one. But I think we're edging toward the new one, and that's what we have to do, is convince them that it would be more cost-effective for a new one for the kids.
Thank you.
So, first of all, thank you very much for inviting us this evening and having this conversation together, which is really critical to the future of the students and the families and the whole community of Wakefield. I think it's very clear to everyone here, and hopefully to folks, you know, at home as well, in the community, that the high school is in very serious need of, you know, being rebuilt. And clearly, as you went through tonight, all of the infrastructure issues with the building, the mechanical systems, you know, that has, you know, the most important thing in our schools is the, is the actual delivery of teaching and learning, but that is compromised, as you've clearly pointed out, when the building doesn't fit. And the way we used to teach in the 1960s and '70s, it's dramatically different today. I have two teenage daughters, you know, I see this firsthand as well, so kinds of facilities we need, I mean, no way more, is that more true than in the sciences, of course, but it's true even in teaching, social studies, or other areas. And I think the point that, you know, the Superintendent made around the expectations now being raised as the kids go through the middle school, you know, and they have world-class facilities, to then take a step back is, you know, it's going to, it's going to be really make it, put even a finer point, right, on the deficiency. So I must say that I'm, you know, really applaud, you know, with Principal, you know, Metropolis, what you were able to do, and your staff and the teachers, you know, under difficult conditions, and then how hard you work to make the best of that so that the community can still deliver, you know, a great education to the students. And I know you're committed to doing that while we work hard to see the building is, you know, is rebuilt. Last year, the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, had 205 statements of interest. One of those was from Wakefield, right? Of those, 26 were considered for further consideration, and eight were invited into the MSBA process. So it is daunting, that was only about 4% of the total submissions last year. Last year was also when, as Chris mentioned, we did invite Jack McCarthy, the Executive Director of the MSBA, to come out personally, and I think that was an important opportunity to see first, you know, firsthand. And I know an SOI was submitted that year, although I think this year, a Statement of Interest, as you've said, had the benefit of all of the, this excellent work that was done through the, you know, the generosity of the town funding it and the consultant that performed the study. So I think having that, you know, much more detailed, specific, stronger Statement of Interest this time around, I think is a real credit to our effort here. And so I think that that was, you know, time and money well-spent. So this year, I believe there were 156 statements of interest submitted, so that's good. There's fewer than last year, so 156 down from 205. And the fact that the MSBA has just notified us that they're coming on October 27th is a good sign, right, because that means we've essentially cleared the first hurdle. And, you know, Representative Doran Wong and myself have spoken with the MSBA, with Jack McCarthy and his team multiple times, you know, going back to last year and on, and so I think, you know, they know this is our, you know, high priority, you know, for us. That's obviously the highest priority in Wakefield. And so I think that we are moving in the right direction. Again, we know there's no guarantee we will get accepted in this time because it is still so competitive and they have, they have limited funds, so it simply comes down to that. But I think we, all the work we've done and all the advocacy and all the preparation is going to pay off, and it's what we need to do. So I think we're, you know, we're on the right track. Obviously, the visit on the 27th is very important, that we make our case very persuasively. I'm sure we will. And then we should get a decision, I believe it's late fall into the winter, right, is when we'll hear back as to whether we're accepted in. And then once we are accepted, as everyone probably knows, they require a feasibility study, so even though we've done one, and that will be very extensive, and it will look at every option, including rebuilding the existing envelope, tearing it down completely and building new in, you know, a different site and everything in between. And from my experience in the past, that is a very good process. It's very rigorous, and it does build support within the community for whatever option is ultimately chosen because members of the public, because remember, Wakefield taxpayers will probably have to fund maybe roughly half of this, and the MSBA would fund the other half roughly. You know, we need to build support in the community that this is a good plan, it's the most cost-effective plan, you know, it's been well-researched. So I think, again, all the work that's being done not only is important for the MSBA to get them, to get us accepted into the program, it's also important for the residents of Wakefield to build confidence that, you know, ultimately, when this is put before them, that it's worthy of their support.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, and that's very well put, Senator, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to have this conversation with you here tonight, is another milestone in that process of building community support. So I think we'll pause here, and I'll ask my committee members if they have questions of either the staff who did the great presentation here tonight or the legislators. So open it up. Tom?
Is this specific to the MSBA and the high school matter?
Right now, yes. Yeah, open it up, yeah.
I think my question to the Superintendent, Principal Metropolis, but how, you said our accreditation is on warning since 2011. So how long can we stay on warning, and will NEAS work with us while we are going through the process with the NEAS?
So I'm not sure how long we can stay on warning, but...
So, I'm not sure how long we'd stay on warning, but in terms of, in terms of the amount of work that we're doing over the next, say, year and however long it takes in terms of the, the process, essentially, the response that I received from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges was that we keep them informed of all of the recommendations that they move, that they presented to us. Essentially, what they said was provide an update on the status of your application with the MSBA, and provide an update on the status of all facilities recommendations that are currently designated in progress. And, you know, like Ms. Sorio had said, we've definitely challenged our staff and our school community, but we've had support from the town and capital investment to try to continue to improve upon the things that we can improve on, and we will continue to do so, and I think we'll probably stay on that warning status. But it's definitely connected to our application, and I'm curious to see what would happen if we were not invited to join. So I don't really have a direct answer for you, but I do know that they don't seem to have any intention of taking us off of warning. Essentially, it's connected to delivering curriculum, and those science labs in particular, it's not, it's not possible to do that. So like you have decaying hoods that, you know, we always look at, like, you can't use this classroom during this block because this hood doesn't work. So that means, as much as maybe even you could have new equipment like a Bunsen burner or whatever, you can't use it within that space, you have to really be thoughtful about your scheduling, and that's the way that the accreditation team looks at things, and they're looking for a major improvement.
Other questions?
In fact, that's a question, I think this is for the superintendent. I'm just curious what the projections are for enrollment at the high school, do we have those for, say, the next, over the next 10 years?
We do, so we, NESDEC prepared our enrollment projections for the next 15 years, I think it was, right, Chris?
I think so, yeah.
Fifteen, fifteen or 20, and actually, the enrollment looks pretty steady and pretty stable for the next 15 years.
Other questions, Tom?
Thank you. So certainly thanks to Mr. Metropolis and, and the, the team for, for this work and for bringing us up to date. But to the, to the legislators, perhaps a, a suggestion to let the MSBA know that you're aware of the positive news on the visit for October 27, and that may mean something, that if you let them know that you're in the loop on that, and certainly, you know, continue to, as I know you have, very supportively, historically as well as this evening, but anything that we could continue to do to make some credible advancement, we're very interested in doing. We want to hold our part here in Wakefield and certainly very much seek the continued support of the Commonwealth.
I was certainly happy to do it, and because you've been through it with the Galvin, you know it's a, it's a long process, and we'll do our best to be with you every step of the way, because there, there are different challenges along the way, particularly as you get fairly deep into the process, sometimes there are some hard negotiations with SBA about what they might think of as boutique features, that they, they don't understand what's going on on the ground in the community, they may think of it as a bell and whistle, but it's something that's essential to the educational mission here in Wakefield, we'll be involved in that as well. I mean, obviously, to, to a certain degree, we're spectators, but we're spectators with a, with a pretty big footprint, and we're happy to, we're happy to, like, keep, keep, keep in touch every step of the way till we, till we get to ribbon-cutting hopefully.
Thank you very much.
Again, tomorrow morning, I'll be visiting and talk, have a meeting with the SBA because of SARGUS, and I'm willing, if you have any information you want me to bring to them, I will. I'll also make a point to say that I thank them for coming, making the appointment for October 27.
Great, great.
Inspection.
Thank you.
And the chairwoman is the treasurer, so we can sit down and talk, and because we've been here at the State House, we have a good rapport with the treasurer, and we have a good rapport with the MSBA, because we have done other school districts besides here.
Right, right.
And I think with the state delegation behind you, we'll do whatever we can.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, please.
First of all, thank you for coming, that was a great presentation, and thank you all for being here and showing interest. I just wonder, from your experience, because you've gone through this with other communities, is there anything that needs to be emphasized more, anything that kind of triggers more interest, like the coming on, on budget, on time, does that play a role? Does the fact that we're, our accreditation is being affected, that we're warning status because, mainly because of the building feature, does that matter?
Yes.
And is there a community support that we can show now? Would that make a difference if we got people involved at the early stage, or is it MSBA could say, you know, there's a lot of community support around this?
The more we have, the better our chances are, because if we're ahead of the other 155 with material and everything, they're gonna grant us more, and they're gonna look at us as a more positive and serious contender. And that's what we have to do, is bring them the information and the support of the community, and how we're gonna do it, and of course, we're gonna have the floor plans and everything else. And that's where we're gonna be projected ahead of everyone else.
So can we consider this the beginning of a footrace with SARGUS? Maybe?
We're gonna make you choose.
No, 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 it's got me a tie. You know, we're gonna have both.
Yeah, and just to answer that, they do have a very rigorous set of evaluation criteria that they, that they go through, so the more that we have information that addresses all of those criteria, including everything you mentioned, you know, the more complete our application is, the more persuasive it is, you know, it all helps. But ultimately, they are going through all their criteria, and they're evaluating, you know, scoring system in terms of the, where each school that they're evaluating is at.
You know, one initiative that we've actually invested resources, money into, has been our STEAM initiative, which has become very important, and we've, we've introduced that at the middle school, and especially with the integration of girls getting more involved in the science and technology fields, would that be something that we can include as well?
Well, maybe one thing we could do as a committee is, is just, just review that criteria as a group, you know, and just kind of go through that checklist and make sure we're all comfortable knowing what, what those criteria are and how we can advance our argument based on them.
And there are definitely, there are definitely, you know, core things that they look at, and you can find that material, it's pretty easy, but I do think that there are opportunities, to the extent you go kind of above and beyond, and so this, this, certainly the nuts and bolts of, we need more space, we have deficiencies here, we have all the things that are on the list, but as Mr. McCarthy said, you know, I've seen, I've seen other places in, in a similar situation. And I think there is a range of quality to the things that are presented before them, to the extent you can plug it into a bigger educational vision, like, it's not just that our science labs are deficient, that in and of itself should be enough, and they've kind of got to look at that. But it is connected to this STEAM initiative that we've taken on, we're gonna follow through on regardless of what y'all give to us, but this is integral to our, this isn't just patching the roof. This is a creative expansion of what we're trying to accomplish, you know, across a range of disciplines that, you know, particularly now would focus on career readiness, jobs of the future, all that thing. We're directly plugging into that, and this is a piece of that puzzle, I think that's very compelling.
I think maybe to add on to that point, I, from the workshops that I've gone to, the educational program, the educational vision is, is sometimes the, the tiebreaker, if you will, and I think we have a really strong instructional strategy and plan in the Wakefield Public Schools, and I think we really need to pull that out, and as you said, demonstrate that this is where we're headed, this is the educational programming and vision that we're headed toward, including STEAM, the STEAM initiative, and, and it's our intention to do it, and an appropriate facility would really support that. So I, I do, I think that that is what I've heard as well, is that that's a really critical point that we have to keep driving home. This isn't just about, you know, fixing, you know, a building that's beginning to decay, it's, it's really about the education, educational program that lives within it, and the vision we have for the Wakefield Public Schools. And I think that's a real strength that we have right now, I think we have a very strong vision for where we want to be with the educational programming, so I think we have to make sure that we really sell that.
Makes perfect sense, okay. Rob?
Yes, I'll echo everyone's thanks for coming, Rich, Maria, and certainly the state delegation. We're talking a lot about the jump between the Galvin to the high school, and I think that's a really strong point that can't be underestimated. When I was, when we were guest reading last year at the Woodville, I read to a fourth grade class, and I said, "Are you guys excited to go to fifth grade?" And they said, "I don't know, but I'm really excited to go to the new Galvin." And, you know, that's, just to be, to be able to have that excitement, you know, in order to go to a new building speaks a lot to their excitement, getting out of bed in the morning and going off to fifth grade. So it does, however, beg the question in my mind, does the fact that Wakefield was the recipient of MSBA assistance previously in the last decade or however, play against, you know, work in our disadvantage? In other words, is there a recalcitrance in the MSBA, either institutionally or historically in your experience, to give another MSBA, MSBA invitation to a community that had just received one?
I think it prob, I don't want to speak for the authority, Lord knows, but I think it breaks both ways, because, I mean, the show, I think, yes, they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna send a quarter of a billion dollars to one community to rebuild all their schools, so actually, back in like the late 80s, that's exactly what they did in Malton. But we're not in Malton, so, and it's a whole different program these days. But there is a lot of value in execution of a successful project, which you all have done, not, not, quite frankly, not just with the Galvin, Galvin being the most recent and most sophisticated example, but you have other things you can point to that show that, you know, this is part of a process, kind of like what we talked about before, you're always kind of thinking proactively about what do we need? And it's not just physical plant, but it is physical plant, you can certainly point to, I would point to, you know, the budget progress you guys made, you guys made a tremendous commitment last year to make a huge increase in your operating budget. That's a big deal, and that shows, that shows the understanding, it's not just brick and mortar. Brick and mortar's critical, but, kind of going back to this idea of, of an educational vision, it reinforces that, and I think that, I think that's to your credit.
I would just add, I, I think there's many factors, and I imagine that is one, that they would, if, if, all else were equal, but I would, I would venture a guess that of the 156 school districts that applied for a school, many of those have probably done work on a school in the district in the last decade, let's say. You know, maybe they did one of their elementary schools, or they've done, so, you know, I, I would be surprised if, if many of those haven't already been a recipient, you know, of MSBA funds and, and actually done, done a project together. So Wakefield is far from unique in that, in that situation.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, comments on MSBA process, the WMHS process? All right, thank you. So I, I also wanted to set aside a little bit of time to, since you're here, we have the benefit of your presence to talk just maybe more generally about Chapter 70, the state budget process, if we can get to a charter, the charter school issue, I think you talked a little bit about that with the, with the Board of Selectmen last night, and I, I know that Senator Lewis, you were kind enough to share with us that you've got the Commissioner of Education coming to Melrose next week, I guess, right? Which is great, and I want to make sure all the committee knows that they can, they can join you for that. So maybe just open it up, Wakefield did pretty well in, in Chapter 70 and, and Local Education Aid this year, we benefited from that. Is this, is this progress, in your mind, going to continue? Can we, can we feel confident that the, you know, the revenue picture and the budget picture's gonna continue to improve for public education for systems like ours?
So there's, as we've talked about before, and then, you know, the formula, the Chapter 70 formula is, is problematic and it's complicated. It, I think the reason it was a good year for Wakefield is twofold, the total amount of funding that the legislature and the governor put into Chapter 70, because this is a top priority for, you know, all of us and many of our colleagues, so even though the state budget is very tight, as is the town's budget, this is a, a very much a priority area, so many parts of the state budget, you know, were level-funded, even some areas cut a little bit. Chapter 70 would be one of the few areas that was, you know, increased pretty significantly, so that's one factor. And then the other is, because Wakefield is still below its target of 17 and 1/2% of the foundation budget, the, this, the implementation this year was, it gets technical here, but it was 80% effort reduction, so, and that's better than it's been in many other years. So essentially, it's how much of the, of the gap is being closed to get communities like Wakefield to where their targets should be. So because that was a, is a very high number, some years it's been as low as 20% reduction, maybe 50%, this was 80%, that contributed. So I think the total increase was about $440,000 this year. So each year, it's a little different, again, depending on those different factors, right, both the total amount of funding and then how much the effort reduction is, and how close Wakefield's getting to 17 and 1/2%, which is the target for the community. The bigger picture, as we've talked about before, is, you know, we need to update and reform the formula in, in its entirety, because it's not adequately reflecting, you know, what our schools actually need to educate our students today. Underestimates healthcare costs, underestimates special aid costs, underestimates teacher professional development. We've made progress on that, we had a blue-ribbon bipartisan commission that went all around the state, you know, school committees participated in that, superintendents, they came out with their report, which was very...
Expensive.
Expensive, but it provided, you know, very strong credible support for the fact that the foundation budget, which is used to determine the Chapter 70 allocations for every school district, is, is inadequate. And now our challenge is to move forward with, with implementing that funding. The state senate this legislative session did pass a bill, it was an attempt to deal with the charter school issue, which I get, I assume we'll get to in a moment, which basically would require, have, which the bill that passed required an implementation over, I believe, seven years to fully implement the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And we tied any increase in the charter school cap to the implementation of those recommendations. So I was very, that was one of the reasons I ended up actually supporting that legislation, even though I have serious concerns about raising the charter school cap, was for that reason, because it would have forced the, the implementation of the recommendations, which would yield more Chapter 70 money for Wakefield, and, and for many other communities as well that, you know, that are, that, that needed. But that bill did not advance any further, mostly because the charter school issue is such a controversial and difficult one, and will be on the ballot.
Thank you, thank you, Senator. Other thoughts, Representative Burdorin?
No, I think, I mean, I think the Senator has, has kind of captured, the, the, the thing we need to focus on in terms of this community, regardless of what the general flow of dollars is on Chapter 70, is to make sure Wakefield gets its fair share. That's always been the concern, and it's, the Senator hit the nail on the head, that, that one piece of the formula, the, different communities have different reasons to poke different parts of the formula, as you saw with some tremendous fluctuations around how we count low-income people. This year, we changed from essentially a model of free and reduced lunch to essentially, as I understand it, application for other benefit streams. So in other words, if you apply for mass health, because you income qualified, that might be a trigger that you should be counted as a low-income family for the purposes of that aid calculation, as opposed to the, the free and reduced lunch application. For some communities, for Wakefield, I think you might have come out actually a little bit better, not significantly, there are communities like, like Brockton in particular, Everett, that got devastated, you know, six and seven-figure changes into how much, into how much money would come into the community based on that. For a community like, like Wakefield, that's probably not gonna be a huge piece, but that the, the fact that Jason talked about is the one that we need to, you know, keep an eye on and keep prioritizing, because it's kind of a, it's kind of a funky thing, it's part of a formula, and as I understand it, DESI really kind of gets to jiggle the formula. There is a, there is a formula set out there, but then how it gets calculated is actually another, like, another level down inside the beast that sometimes is government, to figure out what dollars are actually on a float of a particular community. The last, two out of the last three years, we've had some pretty good, some pretty good attention to that, and some pretty good focus in ways that have benefited... that have benefited this community. But we have to continue to pay attention. For as long as this is the, the current formulation, that's, that's the job that we have to do.
I also think that we should relook at the formula of how, how much money goes with the student to the charter schools. Because what we're doing now is, we're just saying, this is how much the school get, and these are how many students, and we just divide. But what goes with the student that is going to the charter school is also special need money and handicap. That, I think, should be taken out because they're really not, they're not going to be using the money over there. We need it in our regular schools. And I think that we should really look at the formula that they're doing. And again, I think this money should follow the student. Right now, if I'm a student, a little old.
Never too old to learn.
Never too old to learn, but too old to be in high school. But if I went to a charter school in September and then said in December, "You know what? My friends aren't here. Charter school is not right for me. I want to go back to my high school." You go back to your high school, but the money stays at the charter school.
Right, right, right.
It should be prorated so that the school gets their money back. And that's where we have to do our work and try to redo the formula. And, you know, there's going to be, the charter school is of course going to be against it, but we got to look what's best for the whole community and the majority of the students.
Thank you. That's really thoughtful response. So I'll open it up for committee members to ask questions about any of these issues, Chapter 70, thoughts. Chris?
It, you know, when the state budget gets formed, it always seems as though the, you know, we get an increase in Chapter 70, but we get a decrease in Circuit Breaker or something. And they, but the net amount of money doesn't seem to change a lot. Is that just because there isn't any new money and you're just kind of reallocating the same pot? Or, I mean, why, it seems like it, we, if one comes in, one goes out, and it, so an increase, you know, we can, we can say, oh, we got an increase, but no one ever talks about the decrease in the other areas. And the, the net amount of money coming through, I'm not, and I don't know this to be true or not, is our net really going up?
The net increase, the net cherry sheet for Wakefield for this year is an increase of about five hundred thousand dollars. So that's adding up the, the receipts, you know, Local Aid, Chapter 70, charter school reimbursement, and a few others, and then subtracting the charges against that, which would include the money flowing for the charter school, vocational school, MBTA. And so that's a, that is, that's a pretty healthy increase for, for this year. It does differ year to year, again, because all these things are calculated differently. But, you know, each of these accounts is determined separately. The amount of total Chapter 70 funding is determined through the collective budget process. The governor has his input, the House, the Senate. Same is true for the Circuit Breaker, right? That, that's determined. Same is true for the charter school reimbursement account, right? Because some of the money, when the students leave the district, there is some reimbursement back to the sending district over a period of three years, I believe. Maybe it's five years.
It's, it changes.
It just changed. It changed, right. It was six, and the governor proposed to change that. But anyway, so each of those are accounts in the overall state budget, and a decision has to be made how much in total goes into each of those. And then, of course, that then gets distributed out. So that's why it can fluctuate. But I do think, I, I know it was close to half a million dollars in, in terms of the net increase to Wakefield from the state this year. And I do think that has been positive, you know, for at least the last few years. I haven't looked at it over the whole last decade.
And from a planning standpoint, you know, we're always, it seems like when we're being asked to form our budgets, you know, there's so many unknowns. The Circuit Breaker might be sixty percent, it might be seventy percent, it might be forty percent, and it's, it's a, it's a percentage of a big number. Can you think of a way that, you know, our planning could be made easier?
It's a great point. It would be so much easier for everyone if the state budget process went first, and then, and then the cities and towns, you know, went next and knew what their state aid numbers were. But they kind of move in parallel. It's hard to see how you, because it's done every year. I mean, if we were on, maybe, some states, I think, are on a two-year budget process.
Two-year budget planning process.
And if you were on a two-year budget process, you probably could stagger it. But on a one year, you know, because the state budget process takes eight months.
With the fiscal years lining up, that can be very, very challenging.
We're starting next year's budget planning.
Right, starting now.
Right, starts in January formally.
So, so how do you make it sequential in one year if you, if each process takes six to eight months?
The other, the other factor that's happened.
But I agree with you. It's not, it's not a good system because you have to make decisions with so much uncertainty.
Yeah, and the other factor in recent years is the volatility of the revenue picture, right?
Certainly on our, on our front, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. We're looking at potential nine C, you know, unilateral cuts, mid-year budget cuts, which could affect the schools again this year. So makes it tough.
Yeah.
Other questions? Tom?
Certainly. Thank you. And, and thank you again for, for this dialogue. It's, it's helpful every year. So I appreciate the, the opportunity to have this conversation. Follow up on something that Representative Wong said regarding the charter schools. I couldn't agree with you more about the concerns about, about how to finance them and the, the fact that it is such a hit on, on local budgets and the local, the cost to, to the communities. And the other thing that I wholeheartedly agree with you on is the, is the demographic or the profile of the, of the students that charter schools perceive themselves as not having to serve. I find that, I find that a disgrace, frankly, and perhaps a civil rights violation for someone. But one of the things that I think is, that could be done, regardless of wherever the ballot question lands, it's essential to increase the, the accountability on the charter schools, that we as a school district are required to do, appropriately so, by the way. I'm not complaining about this, so do not misinterpret the rattling off of a couple of things that we have to do as a complaint about having to do them. We should be accountable for every tax dollar that we, that we put, that we ask for, that we receive and we expend. But that same level of accountability is not the standard that the charter schools have to, have to meet. They don't have to do things like end-of-year reporting. They don't have to stand in front of a town meeting. They don't probably have conversations with you folks, or if they do, it's entirely a parochial one, not necessarily a community-based one. It's all about money going in and not necessarily the sharing of community services and the profile of, of, of students served. So, you know, while I'm not a supporter of the, of the ballot question, we'll certainly see that lands, wherever it lands, but on, on an annual basis, there is likely to be several bills filed with regard to a charter reform. And I would hope that those are some of the types of things that, that continue to be, to be raised as far as if they want to receive public funds and they need to be a public school and not act like a private school, because they're not. So that being said, I have four priorities that I would like to share with the, with the, with the legislators.
Just four?
Just four. I don't want to be greedy, Mr. Chairman. But things that, that I think would be most, most helpful to communities, certainly communities, particularly Wakefield, and the types of things that would be, help us to make best use of, of both the local resources and, and certainly state resources. And in no particular order, I would like to see as, as much funding, whether even if it's through grants for, for early childhood ed, ed education. That is something that we have made some priorities and a particular focus on in recent years, with the opening of, of an early ed center. And some of you may have even visited that. We had a very large community splash. It has been, had a tremendous impact on the school system already. It probably helped, helped us with, with the grander scheme of things. But certainly, the more support, financial support and others that can go into early education grants. Follow up on something that Mr. Cal, Mr. Cal and Ann mentioned, but to increase the support for, for Circuit Breaker, that is, that is money that, as you know, flows directly to the school district without subject to, for future appropriation, unlike Chapter 70, for example. So that's something that, that can immediately and dramatically affect the school district, bottom line. Third, is support for regional transportation. It may seem like an odd thing, us at the, at a K through twelve asking, or at least me anyways. But certainly, the more that goes into that from the Commonwealth as it was intended to do, then it's, and it's less that the local region has to charge in assessments. So if, if the state can hold its commitment, as you know, it's supposed to be funded at a hundred percent. It hasn't been funded at, by statute, hasn't been funded a hundred percent, I'm sure, in years. But the more of that, that can be done, then those are not assessments then that are increased to pay for transportation, that truly should have been the incentive to regionalize in the first place. And, 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 and lastly, following up on something that the Senator made reference to, is the funding of the Chapter 70 reform, you know, commission matters.
Right.
It doesn't seem like, I participated in a couple of those forums, and they did some, some really good work. I had the, I read the, the report, and it seemed like some very valid things. It's not like you have to think about it anymore.
Yeah.
Of course, it's not as simple as that. I appreciate that, that the things that they did ask for, the commission rather asked for, were expensive and for potentially were, were controversial. But there have to be things in there that coalitions can be built around. We are not unique in this regard. We're probably of a relative small handful that are, that are, that are in this situation. But there have to be coalitions that can be built around some of the things that the charter commission came up with. So those are my four priorities, and I appreciate your, your thoughts.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Great summary. Final thoughts before we let our legislators go?
Well, thank you. We really appreciate your time. It was a great conversation.
Thank you for having us. And hopefully you already know this, but each of us who are available, you know, it doesn't have to be a meeting. If you need us to come see something, if you need to shoot us an email, and this goes for the folks watching, too. We're happy to do our best to respond. You might not always like the answer a hundred percent, but we'll do our best to be as forthright as we can, as quickly as we can.
Great. And Senator, I, I do hope to attend the, your conversation with you.
And I just wanted to say, we're doing, we've been doing these community conversations on different topics, moving throughout the district that I represent. This one just happens to be in Melrose. But it really is for everyone in the whole area. So we really want to encourage Wakefield School Committee members, superintendent, other members of the community. You know, this is a chance to hear directly from the Commissioner, Commissioner Chester, and, and more importantly, ask him hard questions.
Right, right.
And pose these questions to him. What's the future of charter schools? How are we going to get these Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations implemented? What about funding for the Circuit Breaker? And so forth.
Well, I'm going to introduce myself to him as the Chair of the School Committee that hired Dr. Kim Smith, because he has singled her out as exceptional in educator evaluation. So.
Well deserved.
Does it come with money?
You know, that's a good idea.
Just saying.
Let me know if you, let me know if either or both of you are coming or anyone else. There may be a chance also to meet with him personally beforehand.
Great. Thank you.
I think I'd like to do that just to see if you could put in a good word for us, for our, our statement of interest.
Yeah.
If you might have some, we're not in the opportunity.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Keep up all the good work.
Thank you.
All right. We still have a few things to get to, including item number eight, I think we'll go to with the committee's indulgence next, to ratify our collective bargaining agreements. So we'll ask Mr. Markham as the Chair of the Labor Relations Committee to help us move through the motions.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may just make a brief comment before beginning the motions to, to thank my colleague, Ms. Danahue, thank Dr. Smith, the administration, for, for what has been a very productive, easily nine to, nine to ten months, starting in the, in the December of last year. And equally, if not more importantly, to the, the representatives from the, each of the labor groups, each of the employee groups. We continue to, in my view, develop, continue to partnerships. We didn't always agree, but we hardly ever disagreed, really. The future of education and teaching and learning and, and students was never not the forefront of any of our conversations, which that makes it exciting, that makes it, that makes it intriguing, and it makes it entirely a worthwhile endeavor. So we had some really crisp and healthy conversations around the future of education, and I'm pleased to be able to say, from my perspective anyways, that these, that these, these contracts and agreements will bring us to some, some, some new steps and some new heights. There's always work that needs to be done. There's always things that we left on the table. There's always things that we couldn't afford to do. But we, but I think we had a very palatable and good taste in, in all of our mouths about the future. And I want to be able to thank everyone that sat around the table for months for what had been some pretty healthy and honorable and partner conversations. With that in mind, Mr. Chairman, we're prepared to bring forward tonight three collective bargaining agreements. There are others that will be needing to wait until October to complete. As the, as the Labor Relations Committee and some of the AFSCME groups tighten up some language, which we still need to do. Nothing particularly controversial, but nonetheless, it's not done until it's done. So we are prepared to bring forward tonight the three collective bargaining groups for the MTA groups, so-called units A, B, and C. And I'd like to begin by making a motion at this time. Move the school committee, having heard a full report and endorsement from the Labor Relations Subcommittee, vote to ratify the following memorandum of agreement to the collective bargaining agreement for Wakefield Education Association, Unit A, which will be effective from September 1, 2016 through August 31, 2019.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Just making note that the, the dates differ from.
What's in the packet.
What was in the packet.
That was just, that was just an error.
For the public's edification. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Questions? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? And one abstention and one absent. Okay.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I move the school committee, having heard a full report and endorsement from the Labor Relations Subcommittee, vote to ratify the following memorandum of agreement to the collective bargaining agreements for Wakefield Education Association, Unit B, which will be effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? One absence.
Mr. Chairman, I move the school committee, having heard a full report and endorsement from the Labor Relations Subcommittee, vote to ratify the following memorandum of agreement to the collective bargaining agreement for Wakefield Education Association, Unit C, which will be effective from September 1, 2016 through August 31, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. And again, clarification, the dates have changed from the original packet. Okay, any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous with one absence. And the, as, as Mr. Markham mentioned, the remaining motions that were in our packet will wait until our, our October 25 meeting. That's our plan.
That's the recommendation. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you again for all your hard work to get us to this point. Okay, moving on to budget items. We have a Yule School lease. Do you, Rob, do you want to read the motion?
Sure. Move that the school committee approve the Yule School lease as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on this? Pretty straightforward? Okay.
Please.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? One absence. And we have a Device Sustainability Plan Warrant Article.
Move that the school committee approve the Device Sustainability Plan Warrant Article as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on this? No? All right.
Just for the public's knowledge, this is going to come up at town meeting.
Right.
To establish this fund, right?
To establish the fund for, to, as part of our ongoing effort to create a sustainable fund to support learning devices in all of our schools.
And as recommended by Attorney Muller, that we establish it, so it was a separate fund.
In the November town meeting.
At the November, at the November town, the next town meeting. Okay. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Just making sure I didn't miss anything earlier. I think we're good. Our next meeting is on October 11, and then again on October 25. Covered a lot of ground tonight, so we'll end with school committee comments. Start over to my left with Kate.
I just wanted to say, I emailed Greg this morning about our Saturday meeting. We talked about the consent agenda, and doing that is one motion. So, I know it will save like forty-five seconds, but it'll be helpful if we could get that started maybe at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Rob?
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah? Tom? All set, thank you. Chris?
I just want to congratulate the marching band. They had their first competition on Saturday night in Melrose. Although they were the only Division Five band there, so clearly they won their division, they got the highest score of the night for all divisions as they're opening a competition, and they haven't even quite finished the show, and there's a lot of, a lot more work going into, into the program, but, you know, they were off to a great start. They're in North Andover this week, and then home shows for the next two weekends after that.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of September 27, 2016.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.